Good evening. I'd like to call to order this special town council meeting for Thursday, May 21st, 2020. The special meetings on the budget. We will start by rising for a moment of silence. Would have to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbine?
Here.
Laughlin? Marone? Morganstein?
Here.
Chertelle?
Here.
Tada?
Here.
Testa? Sandri?
Here.
Chairman Savoni?
Here.
Mayor Dickinson?
Here.
And Jim Bose?
Present.
Thank you.
All right. Before we get on to the agenda, I'm just going to start with an announcement for the newcomers. Members of the public, please keep all your microphones muted during the meeting unless you are the person asking a question or otherwise actively participating at the moment. Also kindly keep your camera inactive unless you're speaking. This system does not deal well with multiple simultaneous speakers. The audio from only one person will come through and be recorded at a time. Therefore, please only speak if you've been recognized. I do not have a traditional wooden gavel with me at my workstation. I don't need one. As the meeting organizer, I have a mute all button. If people aren't participating respectfully, I'll be forced to mute all so that the person who asked for it can be heard. I'll now proceed to go through the departments in order on the agenda. If you wish to question or comment regarding a particular department budget, please type into the chat bar that you want to be heard. If you look at the one of the top corners, there is a cartoon text bubble. Click on that icon. You'll see a strip below there and type messages into that. I'll first look. Once, once the department has made a presentation, the council will question the department head and then I look for members of the public who are participating digitally to see if they have questions. And once I've been through those, I will see any, if anybody on the telephone has questions. If you do intend to comment, you must start by stating your name and address for the record. Thank you. With that, Mr. Civitelli, you and the Health Department are up first. Are you with us?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of the council. I'll keep it very brief. The proposed budget that you see, that you see is reflective of the Health Department's obligation to meet the set forth in the general statutes to meet the 10 essential services is set forth by CDC. That's actually listed in the Public Health Statutes 198-207. At this point in time, we have not proposed any increases beyond salary. And I guess at that point, I will defer to any questions that anyone has regarding our proposed budget.
Thank you, Mr. Civitelli. We have heard a lot from you lately. So I appreciate your brevity. First up is Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Mr. Civitelli.
I'm Counselor Tada.
I know you said you're not expecting at this point any changes in your budget. I just was wondering if, I know your workload has increased significantly since all this happened. Do you anticipate any additional costs due to the pandemic?
At this point in time, it's been a very unique experience for us with having a lot of our facilities closed back in March. So that actually, we had to move some of our staff around. One of our part-time sanitarians, we took offline. We saved the around $4,000 in salary because of a third of our establishments isn't operating. There's no reason to have that part-time person on. That part-time person's coming back on. Projecting forward, though, we anticipate running our normal program according to Public Health Statutes in addition to anything COVID-19 related. The only thing that is the unknown at this point for us at this point in time is when a vaccine becomes available. Distributing that to the population in a mass amount will, will, will have to determine what that budget looks like. We have plans set up for that that we've had for many years. But at this point in time, I do not have an estimate for anything regarding that. But otherwise, our department is fully functional. And basically, we fill the gaps with the staff we have.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up is Counselor Chertelle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hey, Mr. Civitelli.
Counselor Chertelle, how are you?
I'm okay. Still, still here. Still need a haircut. Still need to lose weight. You ended the year, a year ago, with $105,000 unspent in your budget. Was that an anomaly? Or can you just talk about that? And I, my source for that is the monthly report from last June. So it, the number may have changed. I didn't look at the CAFER yet. I just wanted to ask that.
Yes, Counselor Chertelle. So that was an anomaly. We had, when Director Hazelwood retired and I took her place, there was a time lapse in salary. And then when I filled my position, that was vacant for a decent amount of time. We had an interior promotion. And then that position was vacant from within. So there was an overlap in time where there were multiple positions vacant over the course of the fiscal year, which led to that.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. And thank you for everything that you're doing for our community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Chertelle. Thank you for all your support for everyone's.
Thank you. Any other questions for the Health Department from the council? Any members of the public have questions for the Health Department? If you could type in the chat bar, I would appreciate it. Seeing no takers, Mr. Civitelli, thank you very much. You get an early dismissal tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Savoni. And thank you, everybody in the council.
All right. Up next is the Conservation Commission. And Ms. O'Hare, welcome. Will you be presenting on behalf of the commission?
Yes, and I see Mary Heffernan, the Chair of the Commission, is on the screen. I don't know how we get her on. She's muted at the moment.
I'm here.
There you go.
I hear the birds singing. Okay. Oh, good evening. Yes, I'm, we're here to present the Conservation Commission budget. Budget is the same as last year and it's the same as it's been for the last few years. It's a total of $8,715. And I'll entertain questions.
Counselor Fishbine, you're up first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if this is best to Mary or Erin, but the Conservation Commission, you know, the, the open space, the trails in our town fall within your purview, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So when somebody comes to our town and they want to know where those trails are, where on the town website would they find that information?
They would find some of the information, the Parks and Rec website and brochure. And trail maps are available at Erin's office, at the Public Library, and at the Parks and Recreation Department.
Okay, so I am the beauty of virtual working here. I'm on the Park and Rec website and the Town of Wallingford's website on the Park and Rec page. And I see no hyperlink for anything like that. Do you have knowledge as to?
Well, if you look at the pamphlet that you can also access on the town's website, there's information in there about our properties under the parks part, near the back of the pamphlet.
Okay, so where would I find that pamphlet? Because I don't see a link to that on the Park and Rec portion of the Town of Wallingford website.
Well, it should be there. I have looked at it myself. I can't fiddle around right now because I'll lose you guys if I try.
Okay.
But it's there, I assure you.
Yep. My point is, would it make sense for the Conservation Commission, and I don't know if there would be a cost to this, that's why it's a budgetary question, to have its own portion of the Town of Wallingford website? That's something you would desire?
I think it's a discussion you'd have to have with the mayor, who's not keen about having our maps online.
Okay, but I'm hearing that there's, there is stuff out there with maps that is available online.
The maps aren't available. There's descriptions of the properties. But if you want maps, you can get them at Erin's office, at the Public Library, once it opens again, and the Parks and Rec Department.
When's the last time we had a new trail blazed in town?
A new trail?
Yeah.
Um, I don't think we've had any new, I mean, we're re-blazing them all the time as the blazes wear down, but we haven't had new ones.
Okay. Is there a need for any new ones? I mean, you know that I spend a lot of time on the trails and.
I think if you go out to Tyler Mill right now, you'll find a lot of townsfolk out there blazing their own trails. So. And that is very disheartening.
Agreed. And that gives rise to the, the question as to whether or not it makes sense that we appropriate some money to officially blaze a trail. So I think when I first got on the council about 10 years ago, Mr. Bernie was the chairman. There was an expenditure of $6,000 to blaze the trail. That was the last time I saw that expenditure.
I know that was more than 10 years ago, Craig, because it was long before my time. And I've been on the commission for 20-plus years.
Okay.
And I don't, we don't usually put aside a bunch of money for a new trail. And I don't know, I mean, where, would you like us to put it?
Well, you're saying that people are blazing trails out of Tyler Mill. Maybe it's a question for the committee to undertake as to whether or not another trail is necessary out there. Or, you know, the town just acquired the boathouse property within the last few years. And I don't think there's any official trails through there. You know, maybe that's a place. And if that's a desire of the commission, I'd like to be able to address it.
Well, I, I'm not convinced that we need more trails in Tyler Mill. And a lot of these things that people are out there renegating and blazing are not places we even want trails. And, you know, we did a pretty extensive and thorough investigation before we did the trail system out there about where we felt the trails should best go. And I don't think we want to put a bunch more trails out there. There's sensitive habitat. There's a little piece of property still in the middle that the town doesn't even own. One of the new trails, I believe, was blazed on that.
And what about the boathouse property?
I don't know that we have any purview there. We could certainly, yeah, we could certainly find out. We could look at it.
Okay, so that's not something that's been discussed by the commission?
No.
Okay. Just putting a bug in here. I mean, kudos to your group and the stewards for cleaning up Tyler Mill. I was amazed. We spent a few days out there a few weeks ago, successive days, and it's, it's beautiful. I've never seen it look that nice. So.
There's a lot of wonderful people that spend a lot of time out there doing a lot of work.
And of course, I'm very disappointed that we're not having Trails Day this year. I think it was supposed to be June 2nd.
First weekend, right. I'm very disappointed too. But the event that we had planned for the rest of the councilor's knowledge was a history event in the, to tie it in with the 350th. But we don't want to attract that number of people out there right now.
Okay.
We're planning on doing that hike in September.
Okay, well, please keep us abreast of that.
Will do.
Because the 350th, my understanding, has now been shifted to next June.
Is that true?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, I know. News gets around slow, but.
So.
Yeah, that's my understanding. So, but I'm certainly willing to do it in September. We'll do it twice. So anyway, enough of that. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for.
Can I make a comment? How do I make a comment? Counselor Fishbine, thank you for bringing up the trails. I just wanted to mention that the trails are growing more and more popular, as I'm sure you know. And you asked about trails being blazed. Of course, we did have trails constructed at Fresh Meadows off Cheshire Road. That was, we got a $260,000 grant from the Connecticut DEEP. And we have installed three ADA compliant trails, or as they're now termed, universal access trails. One is a bituminous, the other are stone dust trails. And they've really given literally access to these beautiful fields. We keep the fields mowed, and it provides hikers and strollers and bikers a different habitat. So in Tyler Mill, you're walking through the woods. At Fresh Meadows, you are walking through a field, but the, the field doesn't touch your legs. You have these maintained hard pavement, well, hard pavement or soft pavement trails. And I did notice with the COVID, people being home, people were out there. They were out there enjoying the trails, walking, sitting on the benches, rollerblading, bikes, dog walking. It has been.
Wheelchairs, wheelchairs.
Wheelchairs, yes, wheelchairs. And we even have a portal that's, is wheelchair accessible out there. It has been more of a success than I even imagined when we were putting together the application and we rewarded the application. It is just, just grand. And that gets, yes.
I think we had, when it was reopened that day, I was part of the group. And Mary did a great job, you know, giving a nature walk and pointing out things. And it was really nice. But while I got to, what's the situation with the trail and Jeremy Woods?
That's the land trust.
Land Trust.
Okay, so we don't know the condition of, of that?
I don't know it.
Okay, because I went to go tackle that trail too. And it looked a little overgrown, but I might just climb through there.
Then I think you should email the land trust and tell them to get out there while they have all this free time.
I'll do. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I also, can I add, also, we're, Counselor Fishbine, we're putting together a trail map. The engineering department's almost done with it, a trail map of the entire town. So you can look on one piece of paper that shows all the trail systems in town and where they're located on our public properties and also the state trails.
And how would you, how would you look at that map, Erin? Somebody who wants to know where the trails are, how would they look at that map?
It'd be available in the environmental planning office up on the wall. We could get it to the Park and Rec out, up on the wall, like a mural. It's big size, like three feet by four feet. If the mayor wants to put it on the internet site or website, we can put it there. But I get a lot of traffic in my office with people saying, do you have trail maps? And I hand them out the trail maps we do have for Ferguson Woods property, for, for the Fresh Meadows property we just spoke about, for Tyler Mill property. And I even hand them out the copies for the Land Trust property. A lot of people that live in town are confused. The Land Trust is a private nonprofit organization. It's, it's not part of the town government. But we do supply the maps for those trails, those properties as well. They're very popular. Thank you.
All right. Next up is Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, good evening. Um, my only question is, I'm looking at your budget and based on your, the actuals as of January 31st, and it was several months ago, it looked like you were trending a little below budget. And I've been trying to find if each department could save approximately 1% so we can try to find some savings there to, to offset any tax increase. It looks like for your department, that's only about $87.
$87.
Yeah. Do you think that, I mean, do you think that's possible? It looks like, you know, maybe like the office expenses or are you typically a little bit under that?
Do you really think that would be helpful, $87?
If it's 1%, that's what I'm trying to ask everybody. So I, I wouldn't think it would be too hard, but I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Well, I wouldn't want to give it up. Our budget is very tiny as it is. It hasn't grown in about 15 years. Erin?
Well, I don't know if you're referring to the, the natural resources account there?
I think she's referring to the total.
Okay, I'm looking at, I've got the latest printout we got from April 20th. And I'm looking to see where, what money's left, what pockets, what account line items have any money left in them.
Are you talking about this year, Christina, or are you talking about the year that we're budgeting for?
Well, I'm looking, I'm looking to find the 1% in the year that we're budgeting for. But I'm, I'm looking at, at the past years to see if anything looks like it maybe typically falls a little bit under. So like office expenses and supplies could be one area that kind of stood out to me. I mean, if there's not, that's okay. I just, I don't want to, I don't want to assume. I mean, you know, it's, that's kind of just what I've been asking every department. They think they can find the 1% anywhere. That would really be a big hardship for you to find the $87.
Well, I think we're in the process right now of, of creating lists. We're planting trees and some pollinator plants and such, which is why generally, a lot of our budget doesn't get spent till this time of year in the spring. Like I said, I don't know is $87 is going to do the town a whole lot of good if we take it out of our budget.
That was my only question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Laughlin?
Thank you. And this is probably the least budget-related question I've asked or I'm going to ask. But the pond, that, that old skating pond over by the Fresh Meadows area, is that stocked at all by the town, by us?
No.
Or anything? I was out there one day and an osprey watcher was there watching the osprey. And they were pulling like orange, like koi, goldfish type things out of the water. And she was asking where they came from. So I was just wondering if that was something we budgeted for, committed to, or were responsible for. I said I didn't think so, but yeah, so that's just somebody else is dropping them in there. Somehow there's a population.
Yes. First I've heard of that. There are some good fish in there because I know people do fish and they pull out things that I'm surprised of. But koi, that's a new one for me.
Well, I, family saw once, I saw this one time of bright, bright orange fish, like eyes, like a koi, like a bright orange fish. So, yeah.
Interesting.
That's it. Okay, I was just curious. Thanks.
Counselor Chertelle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wasn't going to ask this, so I'm going to blame Counselor Tada because she got me thinking. So this is her fault. It looks like, I love the birds in the background. It's so appropriate for this. It looks like you had almost $1,700 unspent last year in your budget.
I don't think so. Erin, did we?
I'm trying to find that. I'm trying to see where that shows. Wait.
Well, I'm showing it.
You can't hear me?
Yep, I'm showing it in the monthly report from June of 2019. It's Conservation Commission account 1110. Budget was 8565. And as I read across, available budget as of the end of the fiscal year was 169460. So I'm just asking.
Okay, I, I don't have that in front of me. I could get you that information. But at the, at the end, we do some transfers toward the end of the year, as all departments do. We do mayoral transfers. And we try to use up everything in our budget because the budget is so small. And so I, and we do tend to use it up in May and June. Why? Because that's when we do the plantings. We also buy supplies for the plantings, you know, clippers and weed whackers and those kinds of gloves, kinds of things. We stain kiosks and so on. We need the, those kinds of supplies. So we tend not to buy that in the winter. We tend to spend more the last two months of the year on those kinds of things. And we end up moving money around. So I don't, I, I could check, get back to you on that.
You've answered my question.
Okay, thank you.
Because that's, your, your budget is seasonal and it's loaded toward this time of year.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
You know, that's fine. I, I, I was just, and you're saying this year, it looks like you're going to spend it down. So I would like to see, that, I loved what you said about the map of all the trails. That should be online. I'll say it. Other counselors, you can weigh in. That should be online. No reason it shouldn't be. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I don't see any other questions from the council. Any questions from the public? And we have one caller. Any questions? All right, that's it for the Conservation Commission. On to inland wetlands.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. O'Hare, I presume you're still on?
Yes, I'm here.
Is anybody joining you?
No, no, I'm representing the commission tonight.
Okay. And what can you tell us?
Well, I can tell you, the, the budget's the same as last year, except for a minor increase in salary per, for the contract. So the total budget is $104,989. And it's, it's the same as last year. I could go into detail on the different line items if there's some question on them.
I don't yet see any takers. But we'll give it a minute. I'm sure somebody will think of a question for you. All right, going once, going twice. Anybody? All right, going once, going twice. Anybody, any members of the public have questions regarding the inland wetlands budget? And we have one person on the telephone. Not a taker. All right. I think that's it for you, Ms. O'Hare. Thank you very much for your assistance tonight.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night. Next up is the registrar of voters.
I am here, Mr. Chairman.
You are caller three.
I am caller three, I guess. Okay.
And I'm over here.
Okay. And since we can't see us, see you, just tell us who you are for the record.
This is Chet Miller.
Okay, thank you, Chet. And what can you tell us about your budget?
Well, we, as we always tried to do, is just to budget exactly for what we anticipate spending, with some contingency involved in it. However, the contingency of the COVID has thrown our budget into chaos because of the postponement of the presidential preference primary from the current fiscal year until, into August of next year. We did not budget for that, which is probably going to be in the area of around $15,000 to $20,000.
Okay. And I see our first questioner is Counselor Fishbine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Chet. How are you?
Very good, Greg.
So I got a call from a resident a few months ago who stated that when you submit your budget, that you're budgeting for three elections, and that you're always over budgeted. I don't see that in the numbers.
No, that, that is not correct. We, what we try to do is anticipate as best we can what we will actually have. Now, there were in the past, going back quite a ways, always budgeted for a primary, always budgeted for a regular election, and it seemed to be the same amount all the time. However, we don't use the same amount of people for a local election as we do for a gubernatorial election, nor do we, we use more also for a presidential election. So the budget for that is what we've been trying to do in the last several years, is to budget for the exact type of election that we're going to have. The other thing is the, we don't, we would not have budgeted for a primary, because we, the only one that happens this time is a, occasionally there'd be a local primary election that, for, for local offices by town for various positions, and there may be primaries for those positions, but it won't be statewide. And we did not anticipate one, so we did not budget for one. But we had budgeted for a presidential primary for this year, which was supposed to be on April 28th. As it turns out, we're still going to have it, although I am convinced in my own mind certainly that it's totally unnecessary, but we, that's not our call, unfortunately, so.
Agreed, and I, and I guess with the shift to the August primary, the thought process is try to align that with whatever other local primaries there may be.
That's correct.
So, I mean, I, I, I guess in Wallingford, there may be one in the 34th Senatorial District. So, you know, there would be a need for, for that anyway. But with the absentee ballot thing going on, is there talk about limiting the amount of polling places, which would affect your budget also?
Well, yes, we're, we're waiting for some specific rulings. We get vagaries, but we don't get specifics. There's a potential that we can perhaps limit the number of total polls, and we can also limit, there's a, there is a minimum amount of people that we need, but don't forget, you've got two parties, so.
Yeah, understood. So what happens in the case where, because poll workers are paid for the day, where you can't get poll workers, are you allowed through the budget to hire poll workers that are trained in other towns?
That hasn't been decided yet. There's some positions, yes. If I needed a moderator, I could go to another town and get a moderator, but none of the other positions have been, have been decided upon or ruled upon as far as that goes, going to poll workers from another town.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's all I generally had. Thank you, Chet. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Chertel, you're next.
I'm good. My question was answered, sorry, and, and thank you.
Counselor Morganstein.
Thank you, Chairman Savoni. So one question, please, Chet. 54420, rent poll places slash BOE fees. Are we giving money to our own schools in order to use their places for voting?
The only, the, the only thing that we do is we pay the overtime rate for the custodians at the schools. So there's usually around eight and a half to nine hours of overtime that we are paying for each of those eight schools.
To clean after you've been there for the day?
Well, yes.
So eight or nine hours of custodial?
They have to be there while, you know, while, while the building is open anyway, during the normal course of the day. But because they have to work a total of over 15 and a half, maybe 16 hours for that day, they still have to be present in that school. And then anytime anybody rents the school or has use of the school, there's a custodian on duty there.
Okay, so we're not actually paying the school kind of our own?
Nothing goes to the schools, no. It just goes to their, their budget to cover their overtime for those events.
Okay, so if there were any chance of needing less polling places because there were more mail-ins, then that could be a line that conceivably could also be adjusted based off of that?
Well, like I say, they, they haven't ruled that, that's a possibility that they're talking about, but it is not, nothing has been decided upon at the state level as whether we can reduce. Because right now, the way the law stands, we cannot reduce them. But they are talking about potentially allowing it, but they have not done that, so we can't, we can't project it, so, or plan for that.
And is?
But we are talking about what could be possible.
And is there any timeline for when, if that were to happen, that would be known?
Oh, I hope so. They, every week they have a telephone conference call, and they just keep telling us what they're, what they're talking about and what they're looking for in, you know, to run through the statutes and make sure that it's in compliance with, with anything else that may prohibit it. But they, they have not done anything that would, I would consider definitive.
Okay, and then I, I believe I had previously answered your telephone going from $2,000 to $500 is because it's now, the phones are a shared expense, but you have some expenses that are cellphones?
We have our own phone lines for the polling places that are only activated for the event. And that's, that's why the, the budget was cut down. This used to be our, you know, used to have a, a account for our, our daily phones there, but that's under, under another comprehensive.
Now that's just elections.
Yeah, yeah, that's just for the elections.
Okay. Great, thank you so much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have from the council. Any questions from the public? All right, so that's it for the registrar. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Thank you, Mr. Avery.
Thank you for the council, and everybody, please stay safe.
Yep. Next up is the planning and zoning. And do we have anybody here for P and Z? Mayor, do you know who was supposed to come talk to us about planning and zoning?
I don't. It would probably be Don Albut, but he, if he's not on, he's not on. Maybe we can send him any questions that council members.
If you have any questions, we can look to get in touch with him and get some answers.
Chairman Savoni, yeah, Amy, I think it's Amy, she said that he would be, that's the man who's filling in for Casey. She said he would be on, but I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, this is being recorded. If counselors just want to state their questions for the record in the alternative, we can email them to the clerk who will then forward them on. Just tell me your pleasure. Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just ask if, you know, kind of the same thing I've been asking everybody, if there's anywhere that they have saved during the pandemic, and if trying to find 1% of their current budget would be a hardship for them. That's all. Thank you.
There being no other takers, then I'm going to presume that you're going to email the questions. And so moving on to zoning board of appeals. Anyone here from ZBA?
I think it would have been the same person.
Okay, well, you can note Counselor Tada's standard question. And I trust, as I see no notes in the chat bar, that there are no questions. The other counselors, if they have questions, will email them for later delivery. And Mr. Rosetti, I see your name. We're on to the building department. And I've unmuted you. Are you there, Justin?
Yes, yes, I am. Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, loud and clear.
Welcome to the new world.
Yes, it's very flat.
Yes, it is linear.
What can you tell us?
Well, this is, my name is Justin Rosetti. I'm the Wallingford Building Official. I've had the same numbers for the last four years. I can go over the numbers. We have, we have a very basic, no-frills budget. Our telephone budget was reduced, as you know, due to the, the changeover to the new system. So that was a, that was a decrease of $1,200, from 26 down to 1,400. Maintenance of equipment, that's for incidental office equipment, for minor repairs of, of copying machines or some, or some other, some other equipment in the office. Transportation reimbursement, that is basically a placeholder in case one of us has to, typically if we're going to court and we're, we're getting parking, parking fees, that's, that's the, the item, the line item for reimbursement. Continuing education training, that has been, I would always like more for that. This, the COVID pandemic has, has changed that. The state has suspended a lot of their training for obvious reasons, for, for, for mass gatherings. So we're going to see that we have not expended as much as we should have this year. But we do intend on, on keeping that number. As I have, there, there are four of us inspectors, and we do need continuing education for our certificate, for, for our CEU mandates, as mandated by the state. Office expense, we've got also in that is safety equipment and testing equipment. And that's basically what we use every year. We are loading our permit applications, other forms and paperwork. So that, that represents that, that 3985. Microfilming, that's an ongoing. Very pleased that we are, we have a system for, for maintaining good housekeeping. We have, every year, we're sending out our plans, we're sending out our permitting files. We're creating a very good library. It's very helpful for, for people that come in. Also for developers, if they're looking to redevelop previous sites, they're able to get the plans. Previously, I had spent some money to inventory 2,300 plans that were lying around. We now have them in an Excel spreadsheet. So that's, everything is, everything is tidy. And that is what that microfilm line item does. I had, after a discussion with the mayor, I see that he's reduced my number from 2,000 down to 1,000 for, for additional, that's secretarial, for, for fill-in and, and also for some, some other incidental work. Then I've got a $20,000 budget item. That's for demolition, enforcement, relocation. I've spent, I believe, probably about $16,000 of that. I had to relocate a family that was relocated due to a fire in a, in a rental dwelling. That, all that 20,000, typically, that's expended to, to whatever degree. I need that money available, because we're putting people up at 2:00 in the morning. I've got purchase orders. I've got direct bills set up with five hotels now so that we can deal with any small emergency, such as the, the 30 apartments that were, that were, that were taken out with the, with the fire about six weeks ago due to flooding. So it, that, that number, with that, that 20,000, anything that I expend gets leaned to the property and goes back into general fund. And the last item is dues and fees. That is, those are dues and fees that are for, again, for continuing education, also for our membership in Connecticut Building Official Association, ICC, and our other trade associations. So that, that's my, those are my numbers. So that, that's my, those are my numbers.
Okay, thank you much. Questions from the council? Wow, you actually already answered Counselor Tada's question.
Okay.
And?
I wish I could do more, but we, again, we, the mayor does a very good job. I'm very lucky to get out with my teeth when I'm done, when I sit down with him in Jimbo's every year. And, and he is very diligent in, in, in quizzing me. And, 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 and this is the reality. And the, the good news is that I would say that the majority of these budgets are, are, are brought down to, to the, to the basics. There's very little frills here. And that's, that's to the mayor's credit.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm not seeing any takers on the council. And I don't see anything from the public. So, Mr. Rosetti, it looks like you get to skate.
Maybe I'll just walk. I never was good at skating. Thank you, sir.
Wherever you are, do it safely, whether you're walking or skating.
Thank you.
And there being no other business on the agenda, then I am going to call this meeting adjourned and turn off the recording. Everybody have a nice holiday weekend.
A weekend, everyone.
Night on.
This conference is no longer being recorded.